Okay. Good evening. It's 6:00 PM on October 25th, 2023, and I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local cable, Channel 8. If we could all rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next, does anyone have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? If so, please check in with Mary Ann, and you can have three minutes to make your comment. But any audience have any public comments? Not on the agenda? Great, thank you. I'll ask for public comment in each hearing tonight at the end of that presentation. That being said, first hearing will be the four general, four
Regular members.
Regular members. Also, I'd like to go with the first one with Bob, please. So you'll be on the first one. So Bob, would you like to read the first continued hearing, please?
Sure. Nine Woodland Avenue. Owners Richard N. and Teresa G. Monroe request a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a deck reconstruction, a three-season porch addition, an extension over an existing garage to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located on an R5 zoning district, map 49, parcel 98, Mashpee, Mass., continued from October 11, 2023 hearing.
There you go. So come on up if you'd like to report to the board, sir, and ma'am, whoever's presenting. I know you've been here before.
Yes, sir.
Charlie.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Site plan.
Site plan.
Here's another one.
Do you have the site plan guy, ladies and gentlemen? Okay, good.
Yep.
All right, sir, please.
Yes, sir.
Name and address, please.
Richard Monroe, Nine Woodland Ave., Mashpee. Our discussion postponed because of the not understanding what the DPW manager was looking for. And after a very, very short conversation, very nice conversation with her, all she's looking for is dry wells under the downspouts. That's it.
Okay. Do we have something in the file stating that?
Yes, you do.
Yep, we've got it right here. Charlie, would you read that, please?
Uh, okay. Um, let's see. I have the... Maybe I don't.
Sharon's got it.
Got it?
I have something dated Friday, the 13th, 2023, to Mary Ann, from Catherine Laurent. "Good morning, Mary Ann. As stated in the email from Richard Monroe, he and I spoke yesterday. He is in agreement to install dry wells for his roof runoff. Thanks, Catherine."
Yep.
Okay.
That's it. It is very simple.
Well, thank you very much. So do we have any other letters since the time the applicant submitted, or any other correspondence?
Let's see. The only thing I have... Health, conservation...
Board of Health, no comment.
Yep. Mr. Morris, do you have any input?
I'm also... Conservation only talks about a different one. Doesn't talk about that one.
Anybody in the audience have any input in reference to this application? Okay, I'd like to get a motion to close public comment, please.
I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So in reference to a motion, Charlie, if you could make a motion, but I'd just remind you that it needs to conclude dry wells for the roof leaders, et cetera, as outlined in the letter from Catherine Laurent, please. So if you would please make a motion in reference to this application.
Be happy to do that.
Thank you.
We'd like to make a motion relative to Nine Woodland Avenue. Owners Richard N. and Teresa G. Monroe request a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a deck reconstruction, a three-season porch addition, and extension over an existing garage to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located on an R5 zoning district, map 49, parcel 98, Mashpee, Mass., with the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant needs all the conditions of a written finding under Mass. General Laws 40A, Section 6. Two, site plan. Prepared for Richard Monroe, Nine Woodland Ave., Mashpee, Mass., Sheet 1 of 1, date August 10, 2023, drawn by MPR, checked by MC, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, drawing title, proposed deck plan stamped and signed by Matthew C. Costa, number 52282. Three, building plans. Monroe/Reno Edition, Nine Woodland Ave., Mashpee, Mass., Sheet 1. Window and door schedule, Sheet 2. Proposed reconfiguration of deck framing for addition, Sheet 3. Match height and roof pitch to existing building, Sheet 4. Trim, screen, porch unfinished, and three-season room. Four, conditioned on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to conservation and Board of Health departments, and including the condition under which the DPW and Mr. Monroe agreed to the installation of dry wells for his roof runoff, as shown on the plans that have been submitted. Because that was the next one, I went too fast. Condition on the comments submitted by the DPW director to install dry wells for the roof runoff. Number six, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number seven, the board finds that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure to either the town or the neighborhood.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You're all set. Well done.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it greatly.
I'm just sorry you had to wait two weeks.
Yeah. It was such a big thing by whatever. I'm not going to go there.
There's just one member. I said, just put the dry wells in, he should be fine.
Nobody... Well, I didn't understand how, the way it was written, that's what she was looking for. When I talked to her...
She should have been more clear. I wasted two weeks.
Oh, dry... All you want is dry wells? No problem!
You know what? The process worked. You're all set.
Yes.
Meet with the bill inspector, do whatever else you're gonna do, and build, build, build.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I just had to throw it away because I thought that was a waste of time. Charlie, come on your way.
Yep.
You go, Ketch.
Maybe you lost two weeks, sir.
Just uncorrected the first one.
Yeah, I put that on deep it up.
I just got it from Evan, like a long dissertation.
Those guys.
Sir, coming back.
No, this is not gonna be good.
Everybody check?
Yeah.
October 25.
Yeah, kind of small.
Oh, I signed them in conservation. Jesus. Yeah, it's all right.
This is next.
There you go. There you go. There you go. Okay, so the next one will be for regular members, and why don't we go with Bob again? I have a reason. I want you on 339. So Bob, could you read the next continued hearing, please?
Is that the 339? Do you want me to...
No, that would be 66. We have to manage each one.
66, Massacore...
Massacore.
Avenue. Owners Patrick M. and Sharon M. O'Connor request a written finding under 174-17 in 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a second-story addition, alteration, and extension to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 72, parcel 30, Mashpee, Mass., continued from October 11, 2023 hearing.
Do we have any letters, et cetera, in reference to that?
Yep.
Yep. Yeah, let me grab that one back.
We have it. Request for extension.
Close here.
That'd be great.
All right. Letter, October 24, 2023, from attorney Christopher Corain to Ron Bovee, Chairman of the Nashperry Zoning Board of Appeals, relative to Patrick O'Connor, 66 Massacore Avenue. Dear Chairman Bovee, as you know, we represent the owner of the property referenced above. Hereby request that the Wednesday, October 25, 23, hearing be continued to November 8, 2023, as the applicant is currently waiting for revised site plans. Thank you for your attention. Very true of yours, Christopher Corain.
So that will be, we do have time in November 8?
Yes.
Okay. So I'd like to get a motion to accept the request for an extension by the applicant's attorney, please.
I'll make a motion to accept the applicant's, the attorney's and applicant's, ah, the extension.
Until November 8.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye. Great, thank you.
Okay, next. 339 Monomoskoy. I'd like to have four normal...
Regulars.
Regular members, and Charlie, please, on this one.
You're not normal.
What makes you think I'm normal?
Well, that's why he corrected me. He did. He doesn't. Okay, so Charlie, if you could read 339, please?
Sure. 339 Monomoskoy Road. Owners William P. and Roxanne M. Simmons request a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 120, parcel 26, Mashpee, Mass., continued from September 27, 2023 hearings.
Good evening, Chairman Bonvey and members of the board. Attorney Christopher Corain representing the applicant, William N. Roxanne Simmons. As noted in the hearing notice, they are the owners of property at 339 Monomoskoy Road, which is located in the R3 zoning district, and they are seeking a special permit under 174-17.1 to raise and replace an existing single-family dwelling and replace it, a non-conforming, pre-existing non-conforming dwelling with a new single-family dwelling. And there's also relief under 174-33 due to the fact that the existing structure is wholly within the flood zone. So this is a unique lot because the flood zone bisects it about halfway through. So the whole lot is not within the flood zone.
So this is the whole lot. The flood zone's here. So no flood zone, flood zone. So taking into, that into account, the whole lot is 54,100 square feet. Reducting the flood zone, the lot is 34,100 square feet. So it's a non-conforming lot. There's only 138.63
feet of frontage, so it's non-conforming as to frontage and as to lot size. Otherwise, the structure itself is conforming to all of your minimal dimensional requirements other than the 50 feet from wetland resource area. So the lot coverage is 12.53%, deducting the wetland. So even though we're not, it's not 100%, it is 12.53% deducting the wetland. If you don't deduct the wetland, the lot, the structure coverage is 7.9%. So I just want to make that clear. We can go by the lot coverage because we're already, we're underneath it. And as proposed, we're going to 16.66% lot coverage. So again, deducting the flood zone, we're still under the 20% at 16.66%. And again, 20% is the maximum allowed in the R3 zoning district. Otherwise, the front yard setback we meet, the rear yard setback we meet, and both sides we meet. The new structure will meet all of those dimensional requirements, so we're not creating any new non-conformities. We will be within sufficient parking. It's a big lot. It'll have sufficient parking for the residents. And while we'll still be in the flood zone, so we're at zero setback to wetland, we're not creating it as a new one. We're actually pulling it back from the marsh a little bit, so that is a, you know, a benefit. And it has been approved by conservation. The new construction will comply with building code. It will be flood zone compliant. There is a IA D-Nite system proposed for this project. Dry wells are proposed on the plan. Again, lot coverage will be under the maximum allowed, structure away from the marsh, and if you look at the photos, I mean, we're, it's pretty consistent with development in Monomoskoy. So, you know, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I, so I don't want to... This is a little bit unconventional. About an hour ago... Excuse me. So about an hour ago, I received a call from town planner, and he stated that, and the town planner has a new position, and I'll call it something that is probably not, but I'm gonna call it inspection service director, right? So he's the overseer, he pulls together all the inspection departments within this community, and he gets paid to do that. So he is doing that for the town of Mashpee. That being said, he called me and said that he had some questions in reference to this application, at which point I said to him, I would like to put it in writing, and I would print it, which I didn't have time to print because I just got it a minute ago. And I said, I will read it in the public hearing, and this board can take it into consideration. And if it's okay with this board, I will read an email that I just got from Evan, our new inspection service director, in reference to this application. Is that okay?
Okay.
It's gonna take a little bit because it's not exactly a one sentence, but I will read it for you. Dear Chair Bonvey, I am writing relative to 339 Monomoskoy Road. I apologize for the late, later-than-ideal submission of my comments. My review of the plan submitted did not reveal to me any major red flags with regard to Mashpee zoning bylaws, particularly Section 174-17.1, raise and replace, which is why the Board of Appeals did not receive my comments sooner. I've recently been appointed as the town's first community development director. Okay, there you go. Sorry. I am now responsible for coordinating the efforts of the planning, health, conservation, building budgets, fill the comments, fulfill the goals and objectives defined by the town its long-range planning efforts. I intend on becoming more active, involved with the Board of Appeals and Mashpee's other regulatory agencies, resolve regulatory and permitting conflicts to improve efficiency and coordinate a regulatory procedure that produces outcomes consistent with the bylaws and long-term plans. I was contacted by a concerned stakeholder and asked to review the plans for, it says 229 Monomoskoy, but correct me if I'm wrong, it's 339 Monomoskoy. So 229 Monomoskoy, and ensure compliance, one second. Ensure compliance with Section 174-33, setbacks from wetlands, water and wetlands, and Section 174-31, land space requirements, special footnotes 12 and 16. It is my professional opinion that plan currently under review by the ZBA relative to 339 Monomoskoy Road is an approved submission if the ZBA is able to deliberate and make the findings required of the board under Section 174-17.1 and Section 174-24(c), special permit use. I admit, as I write this, I do not have the submitted site plans in front of me, however, spent considerable time reviewing them prior to leaving my office this afternoon. The plans were actually on the counter here when we walked in. Property owners propose to demolish an existing single-family dwelling and detached garage and replace with a new structure in more or less the same footprint with, but with an increased in-floor area of approximately 1,000 square feet. The proposed new portion of the structure connects the new principal dwelling to the new, to the now attached garage. Plan shows a setback to the coastal bank as more than 50 feet. Plan shows that the entire redevelopment area is within the flood zone, which is a wetland as defined by the Massachusetts General Law. The lot contains more than 50,000 square feet of land area. However, a significant portion of that area is within the flood plain and cannot be attributed to the overall lot, attributed to the overall lot area for the proposal of determining lot coverage, purposes of determining lot coverage. The plan shows an increase of overall lot coverage by structures, however, the increase does not exceed 20%, even in consideration of the removal of the flood plain land area from the denominator of the lot coverage calculation. As you know, Section 174-17.1 allows the Board of Autee Appeals to issue special permits to raise and replace pre-existing non-conforming dwellings so long as the proposed replacement is not found to be more detrimental than what existed previously, and so long as the new non-conformity, non-conformities, as long as there are, I'm reading this very small plan, so it's not easy. So, let me start. As long as a proposed replacement is not found to be more detrimental than what existed previously, and as long as the new non, as long as there are no new non-conformities created. Based on my review of the plans, the connection made between the new garage and existing dwell does not create any new non-conformities, and is a lawful continuance, extension, or alteration could be approved if you find it is not more detrimental than the existing condition. I suggest asking the following question for the purpose of deliberation to determine if the proposal is detrimental. One, does the increase in footprint within the wetland resource area, flood plain, landsub, coastal storm flow, have a detrimental impact on any of the requirements outlined in Section 174-24(c)(2), including or not limited to public health, safety, surface, groundwater quality, or air quality, wildlife habitat, habitat, estuary systems, traffic flow, traffic safety, waterways, fisheries, public lands, or neighboring properties, noise levels, vibrations, electrical disturbance, radioactivity, or glare, any species listed as rare, endangered, or threatened by the Massachusetts Natural Heritage Program, or any known historic or archaeological site, et cetera. Please review 174-24(c)(2) for complete requirements. As you know, the flood plain provide us with natural water, floodwater storage. Developing our flood plains impacts our resiliency to natural hazards by removing flood storage capacity and potentially impacting safety and abutting properties. Please consider these facts in your review and deliberation tonight when considering whether or not the proposed increase in footprint is more detrimental than what exists previously. Thank you, Evan Lear, Community Development Director. Sorry for reading it so poorly, but it's about that big. So not easy to read. So I think the way I'd like to handle this, we'll just continue down the road. We normally do. We know those facts. We are bound by them. We have been bound by them since raising and replace has been in existence. Evan is just saying, please look very carefully upon that there's somebody has raised the issue. And so we just want to make certain, as we have in all applications, it's not more detrimental to the community, right?
And Mr. Chair, if I may, that's why I always point out where the existing structure is not building code compliant, the new one will be. The existing structure is not flood zone compliant, the new one will be. There are no dry wells on this property. There is dry wells proposed for stormwater management. There is no IA septic system on this project, existing. There will be one that is proposed as part of this project. We're not creating any new non-conformities. Lot coverage is under the 20%. We're actually, the structure itself is actually moving further away from the marsh than what currently exists. So while it's all within the flood zone, it actually is moving a little bit further from the marsh, so it's a benefit. The project has been approved by conservation. So again, when we're looking at some of the environmental aspects of this project, conservation has approved the project. And again, I would just, if you look at the development, redevelopment in Monomoskoy, this is entirely consistent with that, so.
And again, I apologize for the reading. It's just very small print.
Nope, that's okay.
All right, well, let's keep going down our checklist, yes. So letters from town agencies, please. Do we have any letters in reference to that?
We have Board of Health comments, 339 Monomoskoy Road. New fast system approved for four bedrooms in main house.
In the main house, yes.
In the main house.
And conservation comments. Email from Dan Kent to Mary Ann dated October 25. Hello, Mary Ann. The only update conservation has is for 339 Monomoskoy Road. The commission voted to close and issue the raise and replace for 339 Monomoskoy with conditions in a order to vote, landscape plans to be revised to include 2,812 square feet of mitigation in the 50-foot buffer zone per commission determination.
Yeah, I would just note that there's substantial mitigation that conservation conditioned this project on. So when we're talking about flood storage and things like that, there's substantial mitigation that's being required.
Any other letters that need to be read into the
We don't have anything else.
Record? Anyone, butters, anything?
No, nothing from the butters that I have.
Conservation?
So the landscape plan to be revised, is that being presented tonight so we can sign off on it, or?
I don't usually provide the landscape plan because it's not a zoning issue. That's really for conservation.
So, but as I said in prior applications, though, if, when this board makes its motion, it excludes not, that no change to these plans, includes a moving of trees or shrubs?
Well, if that's the case, we'd have to come back, but we're not anticipating any of that. From what's, we didn't provide a landscape plan.
Okay. So are they gonna sign off on it, or who signs off on it?
Well, I would, well, they issue an order of conditions. You won't be able to get a certificate of compliance unless the plans are consistent with conservation.
So somebody's gonna handle that, right?
Yes. Conservation's gonna have to approve that. But they closed the hearing and they approved it, so it's not like they have to go back to conservation.
It's just a question.
Yeah, no, I understand. Yeah.
So right now, as far as conservation is good, so they closed the hearing and they issued an order of condition?
That is my understanding, yes. Well, that's what Dan said. I mean, I wasn't there, but that's what he said.
So as the appeal period laps, I mean, where are we? I mean, I guess we're okay if it hasn't. I'm not...
Right, I don't, it was approved last week, so there's, the appeal period wouldn't have lapsed by now.
So why is this question coming up about a landscape plan? Conservation would require that before they close the public hearing?
Well, it says to be revised to include blah, 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 blah. So in other words, when it was presented, it wasn't complete. It had to be revised.
So how did they close the public hearing and issue an order, unless one of the order conditions, you have to revise?
That is correct. One of the, my understanding is that one of the conditions was for the additional mitigation, so there's a plan that has to be consistent with that condition.
So that's one thing that always concerns me about these applications, because there's another plan out there that we don't get to see. And I sit there and say, our motions always includes, only can state, any change to the plan, but there's a plan out there that's not part of the record. That's a landscaping plan.
But it's a landscaping plan. It's not, it's not a zoning plan.
It's not a zoning plan. Has nothing to do with zoning.
Right. I mean, you have no...
Well, we require landscaping.
No, you don't.
Well, if you...
We follow what conservation says. It is a gray area. We, we condition them on what conservation says, but they approved already. That's why they have to go to conservation first.
I mean, one of, your, your, your submittal requirements are building architectural plans and a site plan. It doesn't require...
I, I'm not sure if we have submittal requirements. I'm working on them. I'm not impressed with our submittal requirements.
Right, but it's, you know...
But they will include landscaping.
Right, but I, you know...
Other than commercial properties, I don't ever, ever see a landscape plan really come through.
Oh, yeah. I mean, well, we make people plant arborvitae and do all that.
But that's usually on a condition where a neighbor's, you know, it's a trade-off.
So we're putting things around, air-conditioned condensers and doing this and doing that?
That's usually only used to make a neighbor...
But when we've done that in the past, you haven't required a continuance and to come back to the board showing those arborvitae on the plan.
Well, I'm not recommending a contin, I'm just saying that. All right, so let's, let's keep moving, please. Are there any other comments, any other letters?
I don't see anything.
Okay. So...
Wait a minute. We get, well, do you want to come into the fence, or, well, I just have a question about, Cedars is one of those new trees in the, oh, in the tree law thing. How do you...
Well, when that hasn't gone into effect yet.
Yeah, it's not in effect.
That's correct.
That hasn't gone through the AG's office.
All right, but are they gonna be clearing the lot that...
Well, we wouldn't be overseeing that anyway. That would be, that would be the town planner, and he's gonna oversee it.
And they can't. It's not in effect yet.
I presume there's gonna be a process set up between the zoning enforcement officer and, and the town planner in reference to the overseeing of that tree bylaw when it goes into effect. But it has nothing to do with us.
And then there's the fence.
Yeah, I gotta, actually, I found, in the 18-foot-wide easement, there appears to be, and I'm not sure, maybe you can help me out, something, I don't know what it is, is...
Stepping stones or something like that, John? Stepping stones, you think?
I'm not sure what it is, but something is infringing on that 18-foot-wide easement. So I was trying to find out what, what is it?
That's on the existing. That's not the proposed. You're looking at existing. It's not on the proposed.
Thank you. Thank you. So, it's coming out, obviously.
Right, yeah, because now it says proposed privet hedge, so it looks like they're.
Okay, so on the proposed, I see arbovite clusters.
They were already there.
Those are existing.
And it's not a structure, it's vegetation.
They're just noting what's there.
Yeah, the only thing I saw was that cedar.
In the proposed privilege. They have to remove that well, existing well shed that's there.
Hmm. Because it's not.
I see something, I see something that says driveway here.
Well, that's the easement. It's paved, it says on the existing, it's a paved driveway.
I don't have one.
I don't know what it is, it's an easement.
It's an easement, so I imagine people can get to it by one of our.
It's weird that it's paved and it also has arbovites in it.
That's a little weird.
Yeah, maybe you can explain that to me, Chris?
Do you have pictures?
I do. Well, I did provide pictures. I don't know if they have pictures of that specific area.
I mean, it's the easement, it just seems odd that it's paved.
Yeah, that I don't.
Looks like the driveway's coming.
Is it like a little boat ramp or something?
It's to that house.
Not a boat ramp, right?
No, it's going to the house next door.
Oh, is it?
Kind of looks that way, doesn't it?
How do I have a driveway on an easement?
Hey, Chris, could you give me a favor? Could you hand me that plan? I just want to take a look.
And there's not enough plans up here.
I mean, this is the.
I'm going to get one. Thanks.
This is, this is the house, this is our house, this is the house that's going to the easement, I mean, it's all. I don't know why it says paved. It says driveway, but it says paved driveway on the existing one, but on the proposed, it just says driveway.
Yeah, do you know anything about that, Chris?
I don't.
I don't know if it's actually going to.
No, it appears to be the house next door.
Right. Yeah, I don't have a, unfortunately, I don't have a picture from that particular angle.
Yeah, and it actually shows the proposed and existing. It's just he removed paved, and it still says driveway, though, on existing, unproposed. It's for lot two edge.
I don't know. And then you've got, yeah, arbovites that were there that are stained.
Probably privacy.
But again, they're not structures, so.
Yeah, they're on both sides. There's arbovites on the other side of the house, too, down the bottom, blocking out the other house. They know they're stained.
Yeah, but they're on their own property.
Um, no, they're on their property. These, those are all on the property.
Right, that's what I said.
And, but they're existing, they're not changing at all.
Yeah, see, these are existing, too.
Okay, just pointing out some irregularities, that's all.
A little confusing.
All right.
Okay, so anyone on the board, any other comments from the board, please?
I just think they did a nice job, the way they placed the house, the way it's, you know, it's well under the lot coverage. They could do a much bigger house if they wanted to. There's all kinds of drainage things they have to do, they're doing all kinds of stuff that they're afraid. They're doing nothing but approve this piece of property. It's one man's opinion.
Okay. David, you have any comments?
I have no issues with the structure at a zoning standpoint.
Anybody in the audience want to speak in this application, please? For or against? Okay. Well, so.
Take into consideration.
Yeah, I don't think I need to read it again.
You know what Evan said.
We totally understand what we need to do in reference to our duties in overseeing the application.
Right. I mean, if I can make a suggestion, Mr. Chair, if the board were comfortable, you know, they could use my last page, you know, for those findings, saying that it's building code compliant, you know, complies with flood zones. I mean, I do think that the board probably should make those specific findings when they issue these decisions, but, you know, it's entirely up to you. Because I think it addresses, it addresses Evan's, you know, concerns or questions.
Which I think he's just relaying from.
Right.
What page is that on?
It's page four.
So, that's something to take into consideration.
If the board agrees with those eight things that I've listed, then I would suggest reading those as part of your findings or decision.
Can I, do we have any issues with these eight?
Well, yeah, so new construction will comply with current building code, that's going to happen. New construction will comply with current flood zone regulations, that's going to happen. Applicant has proposed a fast denitrification system, that's on the plan. Project approved by the Conservation Commission. You're stating that it has been, we've got a letter. Dry wells will be installed on the site to collect stormwater. Lot coverage will be under the maximum allowed for R3 zoning district. Structure will be moving further away from the salt marsh. The project is consistent with the other development in the area, so let's talk about that. Just saying this, this construction is consistent with others, so talk to me about other development in the area.
So, again, I always provide pictures of some of the neighboring structures, so if you look at the house right next door, you can see that it's a pretty substantial single-family dwelling. And I also provided the structure that's right across the street, which again, is a pretty significant substantial single-family dwelling, so.
And you are not, you are creating no new non-conformities?
I am not creating any new non-conformities.
Okay, I'd like to get a motion to close the public comment period in reference to this application, please.
I'd like to. Go ahead.
You can do it.
Look at that.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this, on 339 Monomoskoye Road.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, I'd like to get a motion in reference to the application. Why don't we include the eight comments outlined on page four of the applicant's attorney's application, please?
Yep.
So, could I get a motion in reference to this application?
Let me do it.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Make a motion relative to 339 Monomoskoye Road. Owners William P. and Roxanne M. Simmons request a special permit under 17417.1 and 17433 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 120, parcel 26, Nash B. Mass with the following conditions. Let me ask you a question before I get into the meeting.
Sure.
Relative to the motion and what's in the motion, should we indicate that we have received and reviewed Evan's material relative to this site?
I think that would be a good thing.
And then put the eight points.
I agree.
Relative. That's fine, totally fine, good catch.
I just wanted to make sure that we.
That's why you're doing it, see?
I would say that when you make, when you read off saying that the board finds that it's not substantially more detrimental than, I would say, based on those eight factors, you know, including those eight factors.
Okay, number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Massachusetts general laws 48, section nine. Two, plot plan, existing and proposed house reconstruction, 339 Monomoskoye Road, Nash B. Mass, scale one inch equals 20 feet, date June 5th, 2023, drawn by EJP, RAR, job number 21215. Revisions, add IA treatment system and details, August 4th, 2023, RAR, corrected coastal bank delineation and increased mitigation, edited SSDS profile, October 10th, 2023, stamped and signed by Thomas Jackson Bunker, number 32653. Three, building plans prepared for Simmons residence, 339 Monomoskoye Road, Nash B. Mass, prepared by Architect Associates, job number 2022, date October 20, 2023, drawn by JM, A2 first floor plan, A3 second floor plan, A4 elevations, A5 elevations. Four, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department comments, and the comments forwarded by Evan Lera to the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals relative to his review of the information. Number five, the board finds that the application as submitted is not substantially more detrimental than what existed prior to removal of the existing structure, and that there is adequate land area to provide sufficient parking, and there are no new non-conformities being created specifically. Item one under that, new construction will comply with more current building code criteria. Number two, new construction will comply with current flood zone regulations. Number three, the applicant has proposed a fast denitrification system, which has been approved by the Board of Health. Number four, the project has been approved by the Conservation Commission. Number five, dry wells are being installed on site to collect stormwater. Number six, lot coverage will be under the maximum allowed in the R3 zoning district. Number seven, the structure will be moving further away from the salt marsh. And number eight, the project is consistent with other development in the area.
So, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You don't need me for the two continuances?
Nope.
So, as long as we have a letter, like I said, that'll work.
Great, thank you everybody.
I presume that will work. I'm only one member.
I hope so.
You on tomorrow, Joe? Me? You on tomorrow to me?
I'll get, I'll get started.
Oh, I will. Do you have the approval?
No problem.
It's all right. Go on to the next one.
This is all for her.
That's all right.
With the plans.
Yep.
Just going to collect my pension.
There you go. I think he sent it to you, too, but I'll forward.
Okay, Wheeler Road.
It's awful hard to read. It's so.
It'd be a total deep of the world.
I'm excited what's going on.
I think so.
It's still small.
Pretty impressive.
Whatever.
Have a good night.
I think it's hard for yourself.
Let's see.
Where do I go?
See you later.
See you.
Take care, Scott.
Take care, Scott.
See you, Scott.
See you.
Bye.
All right. All right, so the next hearing will be three regular members, normal members?
Regular.
And let's say George and Bob, how's that? That'll be the five. So, would you please read it, Joe?
Do that.
Yeah.
Rip.
Keep you busy.
Number 45 Wheeler Road.
Forty-two.
Yeah, forty-two.
Forty-two.
Oh, I'm sorry, forty-two, yep.
It's okay.
Forty-two Wheeler Road, owner.
Tough board.
Marcio de Jesus requests a special permit under 17417.1 and 17433 of the zoning bylaws to raise an existing single-family dwelling and replace it with a new single-family dwelling on property located in the R5 zoning district, map 57, parcel 7, Nash B. Mass. Received letter of request from attorney to continue hearing until November 8th, 2023.
So, Mary Ann, I presume we have room on November 8th?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a letter that we need to read into the record?
I'll put it here if you want. October 16th, 2023, a letter from Christopher Corain to Ronald Bonvy, Chairman, relative to Marcio de Jesus, 42 Wheeler Road. Dear Chairman Bonvy, as you know, we represent the owner of the property referenced above. It's hereby requested that the Wednesday, October 25th, 2023 hearing be continued to November 8th, 2023, as the applicant is currently scheduled to be heard before the Conservation Commission on November 2, 2023. Thank you for your attention, very truly yours, Chris Corain.
Could I get a motion to accept the applicant's attorney's request to a November 8th extension?
Make a motion to accept.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So, the next one will be the three regular members, and how about George and Charlie? So, who would like, why don't we have, Bob, you want to read it? So that way, keep you busy, too.
Okay.
So, that would be 20 Beers Road.
20 Beers Road, owners Paul K. and Kathleen A. Betancourt, request a special permit under 17417.1 and 17433 of the zoning bylaws to replace an existing single-family dwelling and replace it with a new single-family dwelling on property located in R3 and Pompano's overlay districts, map 117, parcel 322, Nash B. Mass.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just interject on this one and explain the situation here from.
Yep.
You can come up. What happened here, this Form 2 came to me prior to the remand for the wetlands, land subject to coastal flowage, being a wetland as we do, as we see it today. So, this raise and replace is conforming in every way. It's conforming now, the existing house is conforming, and the second, and replace is conforming. So, there's no need for a special permit for raise and replace, they can do that by right. So, I think the applicant needs to withdraw the raise and replace. He is here only for the 17433 setback to wetlands as we see it today after the, after the remand.
Do you see that as a requirement for variance?
Not at all. Because it's the existing house there, he's just here for a finding. I feel bad that this applicant had to come to the board at this time, but at the, at the time when I made the decision, we didn't look at land subject to coastal flowage the same way.
So, all the applicant would require or need would be a written finding that states that he, his distance of setback from wetlands is accepted.
Is, correct.
Is, yes, is not more detrimental, et cetera.
I think, I do think that he should withdraw the 17417.1.
So, the question that begs to be asked, and I don't want to put you through any more than you need to go through, does he need to withdraw, and then do we need to re-advertise?
No.
We don't, because it was included in the original advertisement?
Yes.
Is the motion adequate to cover that specific finding? In other words, if somebody's going to read a motion, they're going to read it off the motion form. I want to make sure the motion form is also correct if this board so approves.
Because this doesn't say coastal flowage.
So, so just so I understand this, so you would state, as his zoning enforcement officer, that the only thing the applicant would need at this time would be a written finding for the setback from wetlands?
Correct.
And that's it? Everything else he would withdraw as is known, there would be no.
Because it's by right.
Okay.
And I can issue a permit on that.
I don't know.
So, why don't we just make?
Explain to me, because I'm a little bit lost here. Why is 17417.1 not in play here?
Because this is a rare situation where everything is conforming, this lot is conforming lot in the overlay district, all the setbacks are conforming, the existing house, the replace is going to be conforming, too. He does not need relief for a non-conforming structure, because it is conforming.
Because if this was a vacant lot, he could put a house on it.
I thought at one time, you were of the opinion that even if both were conforming, if you had to, if you were going to remove the house, you would need a raise or replace approved.
Let's see if it was on a non-conforming lot.
I see. I see what you're referring to.
Twenty Versus Road, Board of Health, houses in, is in a Zone 2 to remain two-bedroom.
I presume the plans will depict that. Anything else?
Anything else from...
If it's on the wetlands, shouldn't Conservation have a comment?
Yeah.
He went to Conserva, he went to Conservation with the assumption that it was not coming to this board. Again, this was, this was in motion on Form 2 many months ago before, prior to the remand.
I think it needs to go to Conservation.
Do we have something from Conservation? Okay, great. Could you read this, please?
All right. Twenty Versus Road, NOI permit application for raise and replace approved by commission.
There you go. So, we have a Conservation approval. All right. So, any other questions from the boards? And I'm going to go to the audience next. Anyone in the audience having input or any questions? Yes, sir?
I just, if you could come up to the mic, give your name and address.
Okay. My name is Dan Masters, 48 Greenwood Road. I actually abut the applicant's property. I just want to say I'm fully in support of the project.
Great. Thank you very much for your input.
Thank you.
And Mr. Morris, you're all set with what you've had to say, right? And you need anything else? Okay. Audience import, board question, any other board questions? So, Charlie, why don't we deal with the motion at this point?
Okay. The motion should be for a written finding.
Take it.
We gotta close public comment.
I did, oh, no, but I just want to, no, he's not gonna make the motion. We're just gonna discuss. We're not making a motion. We're just discussing the motion.
Am I correct that the motion should be for a written finding rather than a special permit?
That is correct.
Okay.
All right. So, why don't we do this?
So, we have to withdraw the special.
Yeah. Why don't we do this? We will close public comment at this point. Let's have a motion to close public comment, please.
Make a motion to second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, we have a request from the applicant to withdraw his request for a raise and replace. Is that correct? We have a request from the applicant. Am I, am I correct, sir?
Yes.
That you are asking to withdraw your raise and replace application?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to accept the applicant's request to remove, to withdraw his application for raise and replace? And the only thing you're gonna be asking for is a written finding for wetland setback?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. All right.
So, you'd like to withdraw that? Is that what we're asking?
Yeah. So, why don't I go around, and then we'll ask him for that actual vote? So, or that decision. So, do we have any letters from any agencies?
We've got Board of Health comments.
Could you read them, please?
Twenty Versus Road, Board of Health, houses in, is in a Zone 2 to remain two-bedroom.
I presume the plans will depict that. Anything else?
Anything else from...
If it's on the wetlands, shouldn't Conservation have a comment?
Yeah.
He went to Conserva, he went to Conservation with the assumption that it was not coming to this board. Again, this was, this was in motion on Form 2 many months ago before, prior to the remand.
I think it needs to go to Conservation.
Do we have something from Conservation? Okay, great. Could you read this, please?
All right. Twenty Versus Road, NOI permit application for raise and replace approved by commission.
There you go. So, we have a Conservation approval. All right. So, any other questions from the boards? And I'm going to go to the audience next. Anyone in the audience having input or any questions? Yes, sir?
I just, if you could come up to the mic, give your name and address.
Okay. My name is Dan Masters, 48 Greenwood Road. I actually abut the applicant's property. I just want to say I'm fully in support of the project.
Great. Thank you very much for your input.
Thank you.
And Mr. Morris, you're all set with what you've had to say, right? And you need anything else? Okay. Audience input, board question, any other board questions? So, Charlie, why don't we deal with the motion at this point?
Okay. The motion should be for a written finding.
Take it.
We gotta close public comment.
I did, oh, no, but I just want to, no, he's not gonna make the motion. We're just gonna discuss. We're not making a motion. We're just discussing the motion.
Am I correct that the motion should be for a written finding rather than a special permit?
That is correct.
Okay.
All right. So, why don't we do this?
So, we have to withdraw the special.
Yeah. Why don't we do this? We will close public comment at this point. Let's have a motion to close public comment, please.
Make a motion to second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, we have a request from the applicant to withdraw his request for a raise and replace. Is that correct? We have a request from the applicant. Am I, am I correct, sir?
Yes.
That you are asking to withdraw your raise and replace application?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to accept the applicant's request to remove, to withdraw his application for raise and replace?
So moved.
So moved. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You are now requesting that this board gives you a written finding in reference to your setback from wetlands. Am I correct, sir?
Yes, you are.
Okay. So, I'd like to have a motion in reference to that written finding request of the applicant, please.
I think I have it. Let me see.
Do you want a drink of water? Because I haven't drank.
I have one right here.
Just take your time.
Sometimes the pressure gets to you.
You can handle it, Charlie.
Okay. Like to make a motion, Twenty Versus Road, owners Paul K. and Kathleen A. Betancourt request a written finding under Mass. General Laws 48, Section 6 of the zoning bylaws. Uh...
174...
That's it, that's it, isn't it?
There's more to it.
17433. Setback to wetlands.
Do you have a written finding decision, Marion?
Yep. 17436.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, yes. Wetlands, setback from wetlands, right? David?
Right.
Setback from, open print, setback from wetlands, closed print. That's why I knew it was gonna be somewhat problematic. But you're doing a great job, Charlie.
On we go. Okay. Let me, relative to the motion, owners Paul K. and Kathleen A. Betancourt request a written finding under Mass. General Laws 48, Section 6 of the zoning bylaws relative to setback from wetlands under 17433 on property located in the R3 and Papanessen Overlay Districts, map 117, parcel 322, Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass. General Laws 48, Section 6 for wetlands setback. Do you think that covers...
Will that satisfy your needs, Mr. Morris? Okay. I'd like to get a second on that motion, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
That'll get him to where he needs to get to. It's all matters.
The shorter the better.
Yeah, no, I, I get it. All right.
You're all set?
You're all set. Thank you very much, sir. You're all set?
You're done.
You're done.
Thank you very much.
So, you've got a, that's gonna say decision for written finding.
Thank you.
See, this whole thing...
Yeah.
So, we're gonna have to probably stop in the Town Hall tomorrow, the next day. She's gotta redo the decision. The decision now says for a special permit. He's no longer going for a special permit.
Yeah.
If he were to record that, he'd be in trouble.
Ron, we got one more.
Yep, 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 yep. I just wanted to finish that one up. All right.
I thought that was scratched.
So, three regular members, and who was the, who did the last ones?
I did.
Okay. So, why don't we go with...
You need to sign some paperwork, though, right?
No.
Can't. You gotta come to town. It's, it's set up for a special permit. Can't do that.
Kim, can you send it?
So, three regular members, and why don't we go Bob and Charlie? How's that?
Okay.
All right. So, Charlie, how about you read 50 Evergreen, please?
All righty.
No, that's, it's not your fault. It changed tonight in the middle street. It's okay.
Okay. 50 Evergreen Circle, owner, Chapter Closed LLC, request a special permit under 17425, 17425G14, and 17424C2, 17445.6, 17437, and 17441M of the zoning bylaws to allow the construction of 9,672 square foot contracted bay warehouse metal building on property located in the I-1 in Light Industry Overlay District, map 19, parcel 10-5, Mashpee, Mass. And we have a, a letter dated October 25th, 2023, from Attorney Christopher Corain to Mr. Ronald Bonvy, relative to 50 Evergreen Circle. Dear Chairman Bonvy, as you know, we represent the owner of the property referenced above. It is hereby requested that tonight's hearing be continued to November 8th, 2023, as the applicant is currently waiting for Ed Pesci's final comments on Cape and Islands revised plans. Thank you for your attention. Chris Corain.
To that extension, what, November 8th also?
Also on November 8th.
You're getting loaded up for November 8th, aren't we?
We're closed now.
There you go. All right. So, we do have room. So, can I get a motion to accept the applicant's attorney's request for an extension till November 8th?
Move that we accept Attorney Corain's request to continue the hearing date from tonight until November 8th, 2023.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, other visits, approved meeting minutes, October 11th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 11th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, additional topics, I have a recommendation and certainly will enlist the board. So, because of what just took place tonight, which is not a big deal, we need to build a moving groove probably. So, what we might want to do in the folder is in the future have a motion, you know, a standard motion for a finding, standard motion for a special permit. That way, if the board needs to change from a written finding or a special permit to a written finding, here's a motion for it and finding. And that way, you can, boom. That way, we can make it relatively simple. Can we do that, you think? Perfect.
Can I ask a question relative to Evan Lera's information to us tonight? Uh, it was helpful. You know, the things that we know that we're supposed to focus on, he made us refocus on, you know, which is good. What if Evan said, no, it doesn't comply with the zoning bylaws?
Then it would be up to us as the board to make a decision. Evan is not a member of this board.
It's just an item that we take into consideration.
No question. Evan, Evan is a very intelligent man, and he has a great background, and he brings a lot to this community. So, he gave to us something that we should consider. Somebody brought it up to him, and it was his duty as his new position to bring it up to us. That's the process.
Okay.
And so, we should always, we should always open our ears and listen when Evan speaks.
I agree.
And I think it's a good thing.
Any.
Exactly. But specifically, I mean, Evan's, Evan, Evan's good at what he does. So, and he called me, like I said, an hour or two, an hour before the meeting, and, you know, I said, put it in writing, because frankly, I was not gonna try to remember what he just told me. And he did exactly that. It came a little tight to the meeting, but, you know, I wish I could have printed it and handed each one out. So, you know, it worked.
Yep.
Plus, it's worked. So, great. All right. So...
So, there's a couple of old petitions that are gonna be on the next hearing.
Okay. Just let us know which ones. We'll be sure to vote.
And please don't forget, we have to stop by at the Town Hall to sign the decision for the written finding, because it was drawn up as it should have been for a special permit.
And it'll be ready at what time tomorrow? 10 o'clock?
Yeah, that's a good time.
I'll be at the Town Hall at 9:00 tomorrow anyway, so that'd be perfect. All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Well done, ladies and...